I actually should, I went by and I will.
Six block for store business.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll dive right into the public hearing regarding the way to the local referendum questions. So this is the second, this is not a required hearing, the last one was. But this is on the single municipal question that'll be on your referendum. November eighth, to see if the town votes to authorize the purchase of real property located on Gilman Drive in Noradwa. Being two and a half acre portion of tax, tax map twenty eight law six dash two dash two for price not to exceed a hundred thousand. Dollars on such further terms and conditions as a select one deems to be in the best interest of the town. Incorporate up to one hundred thousand dollars of the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, AKA. American Rescue Plan Act or ARCA funds received by the town from the federal government for the same. We've provided an overview of the intent for that purchase being the development of a food pantry. On that property, there is a free car garage as well as a drilled well. And there is a reference sheet here on the counter available on county.org.com under the election site. And at the front counter, for those that have not seen it, but we can take public comment and limited question to answer if there isn't. If you guys got questions on that.
Yeah, what we have Bobby against the spot.
Can't really speak to that, I don't know. Yes, yes, no idea. Maybe you're right there. Is that it?
Guys for questions, I asked a question.
Yeah, yeah. Seeing no other questions here, close the public hearing. And we'll move on to the review and approval minutes of October nineteen. So one second, any further discussion? The non-no vote in favor, and that's everybody. Members of force will start. Right, Tom, engine. Tomorrow is the last day of vote absentee about special circumstance. We will be open until seven o'clock tomorrow night in order to comply with state statute regarding voter registration. The insurance claim that we had filed for the flashing light isn't down to Everett where all those poles came down, the light came down. We were initially offered about eight thousand dollars from the insurance company to settle that. We had actually incurred a little over twelve thousand direct costs from a contractor that came in to do that emergency repair. It was a big back and forth, there's no administrative costs, there's no indirect or private costs associated with that. Public works fire, anything like that, we were able to settle that out for just what we had out of pocket and nothing else. So that was closed out in the last week. Twenty twenty three department budget requests have gone out to boards and committees, we're looking to have those back by December tenth. Unless other arrangements have been made. Social services request, we changed that up last year and we kind of managed that after the fact and tried to get all the information in. Early so that that might impact the amount of money that you or the budget committee would want to allocate to social services depending on the organization in their area. So those requests are out there now. Six minute job, the new pub on Main Street. We were able to get in there, welcome them, present them with a grand opening plaque, so they opened yesterday. Open from lunch through dinner every day except for Sunday, so a lot of positive feedback on that so far. Your rail trail update pretty quick is most of it's done. Eight million pounds of steel, totally impounded ties been removed, Madison North is anticipated to be open this winter. With the possibility that Oakland to Noradwa would be open, but not Noradwa North. So it'd get disconnected in large part because of the bridge over Millstream and then the trestle. So we're going to keep an eye on that, it's possible. And the sixty foot bridge over Millstream in order to avoid. Upfront local contribution, that's been postponed until spring, so things seem to be going in a positive direction there. So foreclosure notices, those are going out. Two that will get automatic foreclosure notices, that's the best thing. And then thirty day notices, that's about average thirty one when it counts there, going out on the seventeenth of November. Actually, being parked, the two hundred by two hundred parking area, that continues to progress nicely. The stomace are gone, the earthwork is in progress. I was down there today with Mike actually taking all of what was going on, so that's looking very nice. The project at the town square, that has started moving along nicely, they had just a slight delay in the block delivery, but. That's there, the under drainage is installed, the wall is pretty much built and now we're working on leveling that out. Adding boulders to it will come. And then the only catch there that I hadn't really considered was liability reasons, I think we're going to look at like a decorative chain, something simple on the back end. It's like a three foot drop, but still it's something that we have to have delineated. For liability reasons, so something low cost can satisfy that, it would look nice, we'll take a look at that. The retirement open house for Chief Jones, that was successful, hundreds of people came through, overall positive feedback. The family has extended their appreciation for that. DOT coming out of the last meeting, we had a discussion about the intersection again. I submitted the request that night, they were actually kind of had things moving, but the extra pressure I think was appreciated. So they've installed two new detection cameras at the intersection that should help. With the delay issues and then they install some refurbished sidewalk, crosswalk signage, so that should be a help. They're also going to continue to monitor the intersection for adjustments in the cabinet as needed. Not able to confirm whether or not the Medicare Health Agent will be here tomorrow, but that was what was intended. We're closed next Tuesday for the election, eight to eight at the school, next Friday for Veterans Day being a holiday. The other couple loose things that I had, I'm going to draw a blank on, but what's most important is that. I've gone to discover what's safe, I can ask them for a rate adjustment. The interest rate went up again today, three quarters of a point, so we're looking to have our rate increase to anywhere. Four tenths of a percent right now, so hopefully next week we'll get that adjusted across all accounts. And you know, try to not lose as much money. All right, discussion action on November second, General War number twenty one.
I move that we approve General War number twenty one in the amount of thirty five thousand nine hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty six cents.
Motion second, further discussion.
Hayden logging, what was that? That's sand?
Yep.
Cape Park Recreation is at the bleachers?
Sorry?
Cape Park Recreation is at the bleachers?
Yes.
What's main laboratories, I'll see what was.
That is the tip project approved.
Okay, so tip will reimburse us for that.
It's drawn directly out of tip.
Okay.
That is the new P fast testing facility. They purchased off the bakers and they're doing a lot of exterior improvement, so I think they're granting out the ballpark twelve thousand. And so they send it to the progress.
So is that testing just comes with this down here?
Well, it's going to be statewide and ideally they're going to be licensed in New Hampshire and Vermont as well.
Operating where you are.
That's correct.
Okay, stated, you'll see a practice then?
They're private, they have camp and have, it's a taxable property.
Yes.
And they're going to have personal property, they have some very nice equipment, they will be able to access. Seeing no further discussion. All right, okay, discussion action on both amendments to site plan review ordinance to incorporate commercial solar regulation. All right, so the planning board has been working since town meeting to develop commercial solid regulations. We've been. As plain as possible, we've been all over the map in terms of the extent of the regulation. It was very strict, it's very loose, then we're in the middle, and now it's pretty much, I would say, a healthy balance of the total regulation. The proposal before you to be integrated into the site plan review ordinance was unanimous from the planning board. From all parties, I think it was accepted that what was there was reasonable in terms of members of the planning board. You don't have to act on this if you want more time to review it. But the next step for this would be reviewing the planning board's proposal, if you want to make changes, you can make changes. Ideally, that gets sent back to the planning board if you want to make changes. But then we recertify the language and ordinance and then it would be slated to come again. Not to get ahead, but I think really what folks are more interested in than not is the next agenda item connected to this. It's in page, I thought it was page six, but maybe not. No, it's on page four, section D, the application fee. That was where, aside from decommissioning, they spent the most time. And the decommissioning also, there's a new statute at the state that is going to guide that. So really, I think at the end of the day, member of the planning board two in the room. Defer to them, but I think that there was a stick in terms of. The application fee and not the ordinance itself. John, Chair of the Planning Board, did that be fair? You agree with the proposed regulation, but here the fee structure.
The fee is really an issue.
In Charlotte.
Well, we worked really hard on this. I feel that what we came up with is. A good compromise for the town and for the vendors who want to build these. And we did go back and forth about the fee, but. This was kind of brittle, and so we took that.
I have a question, traditionally before with that fee, what did we, what was the town's usage of that money? So that money, what was that being allocated towards?
On an application fee?
Yeah.
It just goes to offset the cost of the corporate department usually.
Okay.
On the permanent sole solicitor, we had now it was a hundred dollars. It's flat that this solar under our ordinance by definition wasn't developed. It required actual square foot structures.
Okay.
And that wasn't, you know.
Got you. So there's a lot of technical changes in this. Is this boilerplate plate from other city ordinances? Is this a legal review from our legal team that's added some of this in or a combination of both?
The planning board started, I think, with nine ordinances of various communities at different levels. Of regulation, they really worked with the refill model. And they in their budget had requested knowledge was coming. Technical assistance and legal assistance, so this is already been to the attorney for review. They're actually one of them, they kind of wrote an ordinance of standalone solar. And then sent that to the attorney for review, accepted all of the changes. And then the attorney actually incorporated all that. So there were questions about like recovering annual fees, they had discussed that as a way to reduce the application fee if you want. That's just a legal tax. The thing with the fee, which is why we're talking about this together, if you will, is that you don't usually put a fee into an ordinance. If you extend in order to adjust that fee, you have to amend the ordinance, which is a big process. So in all of our other ordinances, that's reserved for the select order. The planning board. Liked the ordinance, but they were passionate about being able to wait in review. And try to get a preliminary commitment and all that, after coming in the board could be different. But it was an important part of whether or not people would support the ordinance. Based upon the speculation of a fee. So if the board was supportive of the next, the planning board, I mean, I think that's going to have an impact just to the way a lot of people vote. And that's why the planning board thought it was important to be considered at the same time. So looking at this, I mean, it's certainly thorough document, we put all the time into it, I didn't see any issues.
Yes, and the only question that I have with this is if fees are accepted in these ordinances, will. They then become retroactive for properties that have already been put up, so excited. I like the thing on page twenty seven, there's about all of like the screening and things like that. So any of them that are already existing, there won't be any natural screening, it'll just be.
Right.
It just be for any future, okay.
Yeah, I can tell you the row bottom project, that was actually permitted twice because the permit expired, no it didn't, they wanted to expand the footprint. They wanted to go to the moving. Payoffs, so they came back to get re-permitted. And they still didn't have screening on their application on the permit, they did that all terribly, but you see on River Road.
Well, it's not really screened though, because in this it's talking about like natural vegetation screen, which I prefer much because. If you said there was screening in front of there, I wouldn't have even thought there was.
But that's my junkyard standards by, well, the always standard, those slacks in a chain link and screen.
So question. This doesn't. Act this ordinance. How many solar farms or arrays do we have currently? Or how many permits are in process approved that would not be grandfathered, that would be. Yeah, would would fall outside of this ordinance.
So you have the River Road project.
Where?
Row bottoms, row bottoms.
Yep.
That's fully built out technically.
Yep.
Then you have the Fairmont project upper, up Main Street, winding hill. That's started, they're going to be grandfathered, and then you've got the Mike's Dream Road, Charter Drive property, and they're going to be grandfathered. There are three, that's it.
Have they done anything off there?
Get back to the work.
Yeah.
One of the other things I did notice in here either was, if, do we have any sort of a limit that we're going to put on the amount of acreage that we allow to have this within the town?
So there are requirements in here about the size of the facility and setbacks, there was talk about. Percent development of a lot. So you could have say only have a twenty percent development of a lot, they decided to go for setback instead. The big drive, I think, for regulating this came from the tax incentives that have been caused by state statute. And that then keeps them under the five meg producing. So you're looking at most of these applications coming in four nine nine in order to qualify for all these tax incentives. There's not much, there's not any speculation that we will see a better facility than that.
So my, where I thought you were going with that is when we get to fifty percent development on solar farms for the total town of Noradwa, do we put a gap on it? Or can we go to ninety five percent of the town?
I just wouldn't like to see every single field that we have here be, so you know, like I think there needs to be enough like natural of like.
It's not addressed.
Yeah, so I think that's something that maybe might be lacking in here that, you know.
So the planning board did talk about that, they actually had. In their draft work and document, they had put in percent lot development, which in essence limits the percentage of the town. They battled back and forth, but that decision was unanimous to roll that back and order setbacks, largely due to the belief of personal property rights. If you want to let us do what we want without infringing on the rights of the neighbors, and that's where they went to setback. That was the position of the planning board. They love to for setbacks.
We had received some criticism saying that we were trying to. Solar developers from coming to Noradwa, and that was never our intent. But we went through the three applications for the three that are going on. Without real guidance, we had to use this type of time review, which really doesn't take in a lot of that. So that's how we.
Good job.
The only other thing that I was thinking of, if we're taking over a lot of the fields and things like that, obviously if they can know the certain vegetation that we need, there's wildlife. Who's paid, like how is that getting paid for, there are things that kind of address like, you know, the impact on wildlife habitats and things like that, but like. Who's paying for that, how's that getting done and how is that being really addressed, it didn't seem to say the notice was on.
The ordinance requires, you know, certain variations in the fencing that allow for small wildlife, they can get in and out knowing that that's a concern. There was discussion, actually, I think it was a public hearing. Dr. Dorn, he spoke about pollinators and things like that that are native, we're finding that people are doing that anywhere. But I think again, the planning board thought that that may be a little bit of regulatory overreach. In terms of trying to tell somebody that they had to have this animal or species on their property.
A lot of that is governed by state law anyway. Wetlands and. Forests and that kind of thing.
So the only foreseeable right now is our local code and our site plan when it comes in. They determine whether the wetland is running up to be for solar or, who actually determines.
No, you're liable, so whatever.
Well, you can't develop a wetland. Right, so that was actually one of the, it was the row bottom farm, way up and back is a wetland on the off the road. And so they had to kind of readjust and everything, it was a subsidy to change their application, so they had to move, they can't build a wetland.
It forces that readjustment.
So we start with that, but ultimately it's going to be D P, same as a showman, so we can go so far, but if we neglect to D P, it's a whole force. So the next step would be, I'm going to create a final version for you and then we'll start that language in a future meeting and then we can begin the process. We're in November, so the process of town meeting hearings and whatnot. We also need to determine whether or not you want to have it reviewed on ballot or on. And that will impact the structure of the hearings that we would have, so. All right, moving forward. All right. Discussion. Yeah, go ahead.
I think one of the big things is, is the application fee. Are you familiar with what's been recommended?
That's next, right, yeah, that's on that next piece here. So we'll just, we'll jump right into it then, discussion action on planning board recommendation for fee schedule for commercial solar. And I'll let Richard start it in with that. So you have in your packet that you, I think it was a memo from the planning board regarding their proposed fee structure. As I said earlier, the planning board thought that it should be considered pretty much simultaneously with the ordinance. Because it's impact on the public perception of, you know, where, how somebody would cast a vote. We completed a survey through the main municipal town and city managers association to see what folks are doing and charging out for their solar fees. And candidly, there were, there was a flat rate, say five hundred bucks, there's a per square foot of solar panel, there's a per panel. And then there's a multiple structures, and then there's a dollar per a thousand construction cost. Those numbers vary, to be honest with you, we saw as low as I think as four dollars per thousand up to eighty. And Shattley was a town that was at eight, and so they looked at that, that was the discussion. And that came by, I believe, a three to one vote on the form of the board to support the eight dollar per thousand on construction cost. So I put the chart down below, not a part of their memo, but to give you an idea of where we're at. The project on upper Main Street, Winding Hill, that was ballpark four million dollars in estimated construction cost. And if you apply that eight dollar per thousand construction cost, the piece thirty two thousand.
Application fee.
Correct, the application fee, so. A fee has to be reasonable, in order for it to hold up in court, it has to be reasonable. So the planning board then was charged with, how do you determine something to be reasonable? The majority was adamant that they needed to be a part of the community, the solar developer, the owner of the arraignment, to be a part of the community, i.e. contribute, pay taxes. And for emergency services, fire protection and education. These developers in the five megawatt or less facilities don't pay taxes. That comes to us with fifty percent reimbursement from the state of Maine, i.e. state taxpayers. The planning board in majority didn't think that that was enough. So they looked at this structure here and said that that should be considered in that. And it needed to be earmarked for emergency services, fire protection, that that would be an appropriate thing if it needed to be dedicated to it. There was discussed that it was less than one percent of the total construction cost. And then if you broke it out over the course of the estimated lifespan of the facility, you know, you're looking at less than two thousand dollars a year.
So it's basically like making so the taxes are paid instead of just being completely.
So I got a question on your five meg thing, so if it's going in a field and a farmer was paying a thousand dollars a year. If it's under five, they don't pay the thousand dollars a year.
You pay the tax on the land.
You still pay the tax.
Only on the land.
Got you, you don't pay it on the solar.
The solar gets declared declared to the town, we have to file it to the state when the state sends us a check back.
Got you, so.
So where do we benefit as a town if all these banks, all these solar farms are under four, I mean, other than getting this application fee? Where do we benefit if they stay under five meg? As a town, because I mean, Melvin Lachelle says Cornville won't want them in over there if they're not, if they're under five, they go there, so I don't understand, we're benefiting from it.
It's a good question.
Yeah.
If you don't mind answering.
So. The benefit to the town on Noradwa is that you would get fifty percent of the taxable. Revenue from value of the panels on the social property.
Personal property.
Correct.
Okay.
So on average, like what would that look like, what's that number look like?
So it's going to depreciate rapidly because it's equipment, so it's going to, it'll start up high and then it'll, or it'll start, say, at three million bucks. And then it'll go, it'll pass in the first year most likely, I can't speak to that specifically, but if I have the ballpark, that's typically how rapid personal property depreciates.
So why don't, I go, why don't we go with eight dollars per thousand, that way there we get some extra revenue out of that because it doesn't seem like. If you were going to invest four hundred dollars into the town, or to walk into a building, something more prudent, that would be a permanent taxable. You know, I'm just, I'm just asking that.
All valid, all valid.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
No, that's all right, we'll keep it to the board for right now.
He's sorry.
So to back up, we. We're taxing the land, so this piece of property was still getting our taxation from the property, annual taxation from that piece of property. The capital or the, the personal property. They're paying, the state of Maine is reimbursing the town fifty percent of the value of that personal property annually. Of the taxable value, the taxable value, so you get a, in a five megawatt or lower, you talked about maybe like a four million dollar investment in that. Three million of it is equipment. Personal property, the value of that. We as taxpayers are paying ourselves through the state of Maine. Right, I mean, the state of Maine has cut the check back to the town for fifty percent of that value annually with a tax pay, so that's money that's coming from us. Back to the town in Hardwood, in theory, just a bigger spread.
Correct.
Any idea what that looks like for the first year, I have no idea what it might even be.
Right, I mean, say it's difficult just to inflation everything, but.
I have a clue if it's a dollar or if it's a hundred thousand.
So you're looking at a thirty five thousand dollar whole bill is what it will pay you on three million bucks.
Okay.
And then we would get back half of that.
Okay. And then next year would be half of that and then next year.
Don't hold me to it, but you know, it's with depreciation.
Yeah, 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 okay, all right. That's good enough, so we get taxed from the land annually, we get that depreciating personal property, fifty percent of that. But that's our money to begin with as taxpayers. Okay, just want to get that clear before we start talking fees.
And in full disclosure, they, so if you develop in solar, because we're seeing on farms, those farm, that farm would have to be pulled out.
Right.
Right, so you're losing the benefit of that program.
Yeah, the farm.
Yeah.
Was very top of the planning board of making a requirement to be over the five so that that wasn't an issue?
No, it wasn't that. If I'm out of line, let me know, they did not want to stop solar development. They wanted to make sure that clean energy was an option, that we weren't being taken advantage of and run over by corporate. And that was, I think, a lot of the feeling was that it's, you know, Goldman Sachs is one of the arraignment owners right now. And they're paying nothing to put out a solar facility in Noradwa, so I think there was a lot of that sentiment that. Those folks were out of touch.
And there's, I mean, there was something that was written in there that kind of addressed, but. And there's, I mean, there was something that was written, written in there that kind of addressed, but kind of didn't, wasn't clearly clear on where that energy was being sold to. Is there?
Yeah, if, if, if you say you have a large farm or a sewer facility, wastewater treatment facility, you're a large user. If you wanted to rent and put twenty acres of solar and you're able to consume it on site, you're not gonna be subject to these regulations. If you're looking to sell it to somebody else commercially, no. Say you have a co-op and you're not the one that wants to have an arraignment, as long as you're using it right there, you're not gonna be subject to this regulation.
Thanks, Joe.
I was just curious if there was a way where there, most of them are coming in underneath that five, so they don't have to contribute tax wise. If there was a way to make sure that some of that energy was offsetting energy costs of the people in the town.
So this community solar that we can buy into various programs, it's something we've explored, but the market's just so volatile right now. And as high as electricity is, it's not high compared to other sources. The, the. Energy being produced in the Martin Stream project is already sold out to a potential buyer in Wilton. So they're not online, they're probably two years away from being online, but they already have a contract in place to buy that energy in Wilton.
So there's no way for us to buy it and get it discounted because it's on our town land?
I can't answer that wholly. But I would say no, because I need some people who they can sell their goods and services to. I think a question on what was legal or not legal for the town regulator. So looking at. So looking at this proposal, eight dollars per thousand. I think that's. Perfect spot for that to land. If you look at less than one percent of the total cost of instructing this facility, a one-time fee is not a recurring fee. With that diminishing personal property tax coming in. And a minimal. Land property tax coming in annually. You know, if you're gonna spend four or five million dollars on a project, you're looking at thirty five to forty thousand dollars for an application, one-time fee. To offset any of these other things that may come along, I'm a hundred and ten percent for that. It's a great spot to land at eight dollars a thousand, so good job for that.
Do you pay this fee right upfront as a, you come in, you file your application, they?
It comes in with your application.
And if you.
This is the application, I give a check back. That would be from free.
So right, does anything wrong with your application is messed up, you're out thirty two grand, right?
Right.
Gonna get your ducks in a row.
Yes.
Yeah. Serious about the proposal, I mean, they're gonna, we're gonna certainly work with that, right?
And don't wanna get off into the weeds, but we, the town sees. Large applications because of waste management. And they come in and we're not amiable with that. And you go to the planning board, so it gets a preliminary review by COO, but the planning board ultimately isn't like a body that's right. Set through things, so. And there's an appeal process. If you're not happy with what's reasonable, they can appeal.
So this application fee. Is it blanketed in with other things or is it just specific to solar panels?
Specific to solar, commercial solar.
And you've mentioned.
For this, for this ordinance, I mean, we have other application fees, probably not to this level.
Right, there is still the legal team. Gone through all that.
So you'd mentioned Shapley was the town they were looking at that was doing the eight. I mean, was it just because that was a town of similar size? Or I mean, why not the ten or why not six? Like, why, why the eight?
So regardless of the size of the community, you look at the fee structure, how it's billed. And that's pretty much what laws, you didn't look, you don't look at population or poverty rate, you don't look at, you know, even lake composition, water composition. It's, a fee is the fee. It's the value of land. So no, it was, we looked at cities and we looked at small rural towns and also the city towns. Something like this, you don't really consider the size of the population or even the valuation.
So are there most towns doing eight or are there more towns that are doing ten?
It's all over the map. It's all over the map in terms of.
I'm sure there's. Some are not.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't want to be higher or, I mean, just to offset costs if anything happens like with our?
So. I think people can appreciate that, the planning board considered that. And they pulled it back, and they pulled it back, and they pulled it back.
Why?
Well, it's also in the language in here for de-precisioning and bonds to make sure that stuff is covered if anything happens, so. I think that's been covered adequately. This is. Just that upfront. To reimburse. For the taxes that went off in the beginning for personal property.
Any public comment?
Yeah, sure, why not? Fire away.
One of the things about that eight dollar a thousand. Richard looked it up. There's a very good possibility they've never had another application for a solar farm since they put that eight dollar a thousand in there. So it stopped them from having more solar farm. I think it's two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen was their last solar farm. So I mean, that large fee is keeping investors from. Looking at, and do you wanna do that in order to block stop large landowners? From having an income on their property. Like with Chucky, he doesn't farm anymore. And this is either gonna sell his land or something and this is an opportunity for him to make. And these landowners are going to spend their money where, in what town? In town in Orange Walk. Okay, so it's. It's a lot of it's gonna come back to town in Orange Walk. And I think that those little minimal. Fees that for all the other land use ordinances compared to this very large. Application fee is unreasonable.
But my question to you would be.
You know, ask the board.
The only question I have is, I, I put it back to the same thing. Four million dollars invested into something. Never went tax every dime, is gonna bring back far more taxable revenue for the town in Orange Walk. So for apples to apples, we're just trying to, the application fee seems to me is it's kind of trying to. Even the, even the playing field. To me, I, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but. Even the playing field, if you're gonna, if you're gonna put four million dollars into a business, whether it be a growing.
Assess what is our cost. I mean, you can't really look at. The taxable value piece, because if it was just farmland, you're gonna get what you were gonna get. You know what I mean? Does. Subsidies, do they, are they indefinite? I mean, it runs until they decide not to do it anymore. I mean, is it five years? I mean, is that subsidy guaranteed for the twenty years of the permit? Or does it just fizzle out after five years and it's such a ministry of law?
You can always come in and repeal the law. But I think that the issue is the upfront, the big, the big. Nut, if you will, is the first few years of when they would be paying, and that's when the subsidy would be enacted.
Right. I mean, the subsidy more than covers what you would get if it was great farmlands and there was a field growing grass or a tree, right? I mean, clear. As far as our fee for the actual application. I mean, what do we actually incur as a town in the cost of our administration process of this application? Between the code and, I mean. Is our cost up there and, I mean, are we investing eight, ten, twelve thousand dollars of time and energy, maybe not all at once? Or will we in the life of this? Solar field, I mean, how many, is he checking these annually? I mean, do we check them once they're in?
They get, yes, they would be checked annually. We also have, they have an annual responsibility to provide, provide regular training on that, so. Fireface will do that for free. You've got the upfront, you know, the construction and build out of these things and, and really. Candidly, it's not a cited an employee, but the qualifications of an employee to be able to oversee the buildup of one of these.
Yeah, well.
And is. Any employee employed by the town, whether it's code or not, qualified to oversee this massive electrical installation? And so, I mean, the exercise is no, but. Those are things that need considering.
Did we land with anything on efficiency of panels? Do they go out of service out of maximum efficiency or?
So I think it was a production, it's, it's in here.
Or that tells us how efficient their panels are or do the.
Falls under ten percent, the state reviews it.
It can be switched in.
We had spent a lot of time on the trigger for decommissioning.
Right, yeah.
And it ended up, what we had settled on, what the planning board had settled on was what state statute was gonna require. So the state now is requiring, the ball, the state's requiring a decommission plan be on file.
And who actually. Tracks or receives the information that, you know, this panel is, you know, I mean, not forming.
So we don't care about individual panels, we care about the effectiveness of the facility as a whole.
How much do they sell? So do they file an annual report with us?
That's the expectation.
Okay, and that is part of that. So someone in our office would use that in.
It would be, or in cooperation with D E P. We don't need. Sold very early and still to see how this is gonna be regulated from the state perspective. And every time you turn to the state, it's wishy washy. So just in the last year, they've come down with a directive, it's how do you value them for tax purposes? And pretty much what you, how you value them for tax purposes is you go to the holder and you say how much is the value of that?
Sounds good, I.
It's a personal property valuation.
So where, it is a newer thing that we're seeing now. Obviously, nothing's been decommissioned. I know that there are things that were in the proposal that's, you know, that they're supposed to take it down, but a lot can happen in twenty years. What happens if like that business doesn't exist anymore and it's?
So a lot of our LLCs, right, there's liability, there's the bond requirement.
Okay, so that we're fully like insured, like, you know, twenty-two years up at that company's belly up, that someone's gonna dispose of those in a responsible way, it's not just gonna end up at waste management?
It's another, I mean, it might, but it's another component of the state statute, but. There is a bond requirement in here. For decommissioning.
Right, twenty years for companies.
So they have to have the financial capacity in place for one hundred fifty percent of the estimated cost of decommission.
Okay.
And decommissioning is everything else, everything they put in, it's returned to.
So that's my concern, we're at such a long period of time from now, like, yeah, the sale sounds nice now, but. Smoke goes bankrupt, you can't get blood from a turnip, so what do you, yeah, just wanna make sure that we're covered with that.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I, I, it's, it's tough to pick a number on that fee, you know, you know, where it should fall. Because right at the end, the landlord's gonna have to upfront this money, yes.
No.
Living with that, okay.
Yeah, the people are gonna build it.
Owner operator base.
Okay.
Got enough money to build a four million dollar facility.
Contracts, you know, if it completes your twelve hundred bucks a year, can they take that off? Their check every year, you know, have the landowner. Eat it, I guess, if you will. You know what I'm saying? You're, you're, you're taking a farmer and feeding him like twenty thousand dollars a year to use this. That farmer never made forty thousand dollars off that, so. Is there, in these contracts, like, listen, this thirty-five thousand or whatever it is. Can we take ten grand every year for the first four years, you know what I'm saying? Where the landowner eat it, then the, the company fronts the money, the landowner eats it.
That's up to them.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, I just don't see. The agreements are all public record. They have to be, most of them are filed with registry deeds. They come to us redacted. So candidly, it's not the business of the planning board, well, farmers. It's a great idea. Bruce had some, go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, I think I'm sitting here listening to all your concerns, which. One person you're leaving out is the guy that owns the land that could put the solar farm on. That's owned it for thirty some odd years. By putting a large fee on, you're gonna probably hamper that person from being able to get a permit. That because they're gonna go elsewhere where they can get it a lot cheaper. I've never ever told somebody they can't trespass, they can't snowmobile, they can't park their snowmobile trailers on my property. Park boats on my property. I get nothing for that. I even give somebody some hay so that they mowed it and cleared the hay off. Got nothing for it. Get a chance and an opportunity to put in a solar farm that will probably pay about a million, million two over the next twenty years. Which I probably will be around at that time, but. My kids or grandkids will probably prosper from it. And what you're doing is you're hindering. Any chance of that happening by putting a large fee. An application fee. I didn't go out and buy thirty to forty acres last year and decided to stick a solar farm on. You know, this is land that I've had for thirty, over thirty years, allowed snowmobiles across it, four wheels across it, Hondas across it. All, you know, honeybee guys, people that pass, and now you're telling me, no, we're gonna, we're gonna unwind the charges to this so that. Any chances out, it ain't gonna happen. So you, you need to look after the landlord as well as myself as, as in the town. I mean, you're gonna get personal property, half of the personal property for the next twenty years. To me, that's a good chunk of change that you ain't getting out of that land right now. There's no way. And there's no way I can make money, ask Dylan if I can cut the hay and sell the hay and generate that kind of income. That ain't happening. And Mr. Lyman knows that as well.
Definitely.
So I think you guys need to also think of the landlord that owns the property. Now, if I went out and bought twenty acres or thirty acres and said, hey, I wanna put a solar farm on there next year, I can understand what the big fear, because I'm doing it for one purpose, one purpose only. But what I'm doing now is I get in my late years, my income is probably gonna drop. Am I gonna be able to afford twenty thousand dollars a year property tax? Probably not. I'm probably gonna have to liquidate what I have, not own it anymore, instead of leaving it to my kids. Because you guys want a fee on that I can't afford. Would you want to have it to happen to your kids, on your, your husband's business or yours with your, your business? Or the farm or anybody else? Would you want that to happen? Or if you had a chance to generate enough money so that you could hang on to it? And the town still is way more benefiting than what they were with just farming. So you need to think of us to.
They, that's true, that is a good point, Bruce. It definitely is.
So with that, I mean, are most towns that have ordinance in place, they're charging a fee schedule? I, I'm just wondering how much of a hindrance that would be or wouldn't, because it seems like there are some towns that do twelve, ten, but things are still going out.
They start developing in that one town when they put that fee.
Yeah, they, they were pretty much maximum on the fees.
I don't know which town.
That Shapley. I, I don't believe they've done a solar farm since.
Okay, thank you. Uh, struggle, go ahead.
I just wanna say that. When I saw this huge number, to me, it's huge. It's more than twice what I am getting here. I went, wow. But if they can afford the millions to put that thing out there. They can afford to pay an application.
And then they're gonna make money off of it and not get taxed on it, right?
Yeah.
They're gonna go to a brochure where they don't have a portness in that, you know, there's no fee.
What about having the fee associated with the under five, where they're not paying a tax on it, but if it's over the five, we waive the fee? Because we'll be getting something out of that. Seems like kind of a. Incentive to go bigger so that they actually have to pay taxes on it versus, I mean, that could be. I don't know.
That's tough, and that would be, that itself would be an issue for the planning board.
That might. Any solar farms under five, over five megawatt, there are some, because that tax incentive from the state is there. Chimbros and Pampiras over five megawatt, but they built that years before this tax incentive ever existed, so.
Those Yorks got five hundred acres of.
Crazy.
I believe Farmington's biggest in the state.
Is it?
It's tough, it's tough. Yeah, there is, there really is. It's a, it's a good argument both ways. It's just.
A lot of these companies though, you know, they're building several by, you know.
Yeah.
You say it's less than, what, one percent?
Yeah.
Less than one. So when you buy, you know. You, you know, you, you're. Dad, mom dies, you give your life insurance and you go, you know, I'm gonna go spend a hundred thousand, go buy a hundred thousand dollar car. And the salesman says, well, I'll give. Give you one percent off. That's nothing.
Yeah.
It's nothing.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my thing. I mean, if the landowner. Is getting all of a sudden forty thousand dollars a year annually, you know. And there's waves that hate, you know.
Oh, it's tough, isn't it really?
I just, I would, I mean, I would care for that to me. It's tough.
That's twelve hundred dollars a year over twenty years to offset the application. If they wanted to enter for that.
You know, if, if I was at that point where I'd be this money for my kids, yeah, I'd take less. And that, I mean, you're, you're talking about getting real, I, in my opinion, I'm a farmer, so I have conflict of interest, um. I just, I, in twenty years, in my personal opinion, is that field is going to be more valuable for growing food. Cause we're an overpopulated nation than, so, you know, in ten years, if the solar doesn't peter out. That landlord is going to get five times the money because there's not enough land in the world to utilize so. If they, if they wait ten years, they'd probably get more money.
What we said right now is what is fair to charge someone for an application.
One percent is really the application fee is not for us to make money, but rather for us to cover our expenses and cover the administration costs throughout the duration.
Yeah.
Of three years.
Right.
We're thinking about our kids, not, you know.
Yeah, eighteen years from now.
Man, it's really neither here nor there, right?
I mean. The way I was.
Bruce's point of if, if it was just grass field, right, I mean, that's all you're going to get.
Factories and mills that are littered the riverbanks, you know, whenever they were built, that was the thing. That was going to turn the world and they're just these vacant buildings and it costs billions of dollars to even do anything, you know.
Yeah, I, I think that the eight is reasonable, it makes it so that we're not friendly for them to come in. But I don't think we should position ourselves as like the bargain basement town to come throw them up there because. I just don't think that's something that we're taking into shot as a town, like we want to develop ourselves as the solar town.
One of it is spending beaucoup money on their town and naturally Fairfield and, and Norwood Rock will be a. Nice, I like to see a nice suburb of that, um, and I don't want it to turn into, we, Norwood Rock is the place that provides them with their power.
But I, the only I would say on your point of spending and being a suburb is. One of those not spending that money.
Well, someone is, the, the money is being spent.
Just, just, just clarify, we're not.
Correct, the money is being spent.
Yes, I get that.
But you, one of those not, was that their recommendation, was that the eight? And, and the recommendation coming forward is the eight, uh.
Right, and I traditionally, right, we go with the boards below us that bring us the information that have done the research on it, uh, in sound, right? I mean.
Most of the time, most of the time, not all the time, uh.
It's not, I just, you had mentioned something earlier about the cost of administration for this and what's reasonable. And think about it just from a fire training perspective, if we get twenty firefighters every year to go to this site for two hours for training. You've eaten up, especially if you take apparatus.
What are your opinions on that anyways, their, their training?
They have to provide, you know, we obviously are going to pay them labor bills, but they need to have around to pay the training.
Yeah, no, it is, I, I. I can certainly go with the eight. Like, right, I'm comfortable with their recommendation, but I'll see any reason to increase it. And I don't necessarily see any reason to lower it just because of my own paper and so on, I just don't know enough to, you know, I don't know. Uh, so for myself, I'm uncomfortable with it, I don't know. And. Right, you need an official motion on that?
Uh, I think it would be fair for people that weren't attending tonight, but that be resolved tonight, and then we can start a fire line, if not to make any changes, that's not, not the intention.
Okay.
And I think that candidly, in the region that are supposed watching us and what we're doing.
Yeah.
So that they know how to move forward in terms of their. So it would be a motion to accept the planning board's recommendation to set the fee for commercial solar development at eight dollars per one thousand dollars of destruction cost. So moved.
Second.
The motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those favor, and that's your answer. Okay, uh, discussion action on land purchase installment draft, uh.
Yeah. Uh, so this always keeps it interesting, uh, this is, I think, the third payment plan in recent history for this property, six twenty-nine scenario. Uh, through non-payment of taxes, uh, I've gone, went through the history since I've been here, twenty seventeen, we acquired the town, acquired the property. Went on purchase, uh, installment contract for sixty-three hundred dollars, uh, and they defaulted on that. And we never really followed up, we never provided services and notices, we ended up actually losing, uh, tax revenue in twenty eighteen on that property. Because they were so reluctant, uh, in their repayment plan. So it's my fault, but we also weren't going to necessarily help jam them up. So, uh, we were able to get that back on the tax rolls for twenty nineteen and. Taxes were committed and there were very few payments ever since, and so then this last winter, we foreclosed on the twenty nineteen taxes. So from the time it was due to back to them to the time that. We turned to, they had not completed a year worth of tax pay. So they were issued a notice of default in June, they were issued a notice of default again September sixteenth. Uh, the September sixteenth notice of default, uh. Ended in a hard break of contract. They had the option to cure within thirty days after the notice given in accordance with the. Uh, until yesterday, they were nine hundred and twenty dollars behind, now they're five hundred dollars behind, that was due on the thirty-first of October, so it's better. Uh, but I think the board needs to do something in terms of addressing this bringing resolve. Uh, now, it looks a lot better than it did yesterday because they're five hundred dollars two days late. We have not had one payment on time, it takes me generating, uh, notices of default or sending the agenda for you guys to deal with it tonight in order to get payments. Uh, and candidly, we have to talk about equity. And if every taxpayer behaves this way and the board was sympathetic to it, I don't think that A, we would end up with these payment plans. But B, we would employ another office at least twice this size of folks following up on these payment plans. So these guys are in default, uh, I think the board needs to deal with it. And tell me how you would like it dealt with, uh, but there needs to be something, they, they owe a little over eleven hundred dollars now. Um, but we've, we've got to wrap this up, it's not fair to get years.
So this thing comes out for five years?
Long time, boy, man, I've honestly, last time I came in, it was extremely rude. Not to me, that cares, but wait, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, right, you're not going to work with us, and we fly with the process when people are already bending over backwards to assist you. I mean, I'm more than content in holding this in default and making over precaution if that's true. Row, remind, again, years and years.
Yeah.
Just it's endless.
What's the total, how do you like today?
As of today, it's eleven seventy thirty-nine.
And what's the total contract closeout? Is there a total closeout for this contract?
That, that's what they need to pay.
That's what it is. Should be good for twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Before asking taxes in. What's their, what's the annual taxes on?
Uh, we last committed taxes fifteen hundred.
So it's a little less than a year behind, I guess, long term, okay? But it's been going, it's been, you say five, you're helping me there.
A long time.
A long time.
Yeah.
This has been the kind of either managing or getting status.
Yeah, it's tough, it's, think about losing a home for five hundred, but in the same sense, like, it's not like this was the first time and.
Right, right, so I.
I just, yeah.
I, I come to you and tell you what needs to be dealt with, that makes me the bad guy, you're going to be worse because you have to vote, but, or not, I guess. I think you call it, call the deck, just say you owe it to us within X number of days. We don't want to take it to home, we don't want to go through that process.
Yeah.
Call the deck. Just.
Yeah, it's, it's hard, especially Christmas, winter, all that stuff, uh. A payment plan, I mean, just because I'm figuring on it, everything that's happened, has there been a payment plan?
Yeah.
On a weekly, monthly?
So, this is now, I think they're third in the last decade. You like picking, that's just their payment status, it's not their full plan.
Right.
But, um, back in April, yeah, in April, we signed a contract, he was here. What I was adamant about was if we were going to enter into another installment contract, that it be one that he can fulfill. Rather than strapping this from year to year, and if you can't make five hundred dollars a month and tell us that right now, because we don't want to be chasing this. And we've chased it ever since that day we signed.
Yeah.
And so when I chased and I sent a certified letter, you're in default, you could, you can see it, notice the fault sent on six sixteen, on six twenty-one, we got five hundred bucks. We sent the, the agenda went out with the highlights of this meeting tonight, not here, they came in a rough one hundred and twenty dollars yesterday to almost preserve the car. With requirement of their contract is that, uh, all overdue payments have to be paid, and they did not fulfill that.
Yeah, it's tough not to look at it as like an individual one for everybody.
So they've been paying roughly five hundred dollars a month, I mean, it's, it's sporadic, but.
So that's right, so they, I think it was like, there was a lump sum upfront, and I'm sorry, I don't have any funding. Those fifteen that they paid that evening when they signed the contract, and then they've been paying five hundred dollars a month. It was total.
So it's something where if you missed one more payment of five hundred dollars every month before closing on, you mean that day?
But we're in the mall status right now.
Yeah, you're years of the default. I mean, that's what gets me, I, I, you know, I'm being hard, they, they've got me three times now, and I'm just.
I mean, if you say twelve thirty-one, December thirty-first, pay it all by twelve thirty-one, I think that's fair.
Yeah, it's.
But, you know, that's enough time, it's two months, it's two payments, and then you come up with an extra eleven hundred, uh, like a hundred bucks. So what happens on January first?
Then I think you call the fault on the contract.
Well, no, I'll say they come up to, come up to where they have to be on December thirty-first and where it's zero. And you start next year, we don't assess taxes next year. Totally, you get the property back to them the first of the year, and they'll get assessed April first for twenty twenty-three taxes.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we.
We made the issue in twenty eighteen.
Right, right.
They hit the late so long in the initial delay.
That's five hundred dollars a month, you figure out that mostly they can budget their money that this never happens again, I mean.
Sure, but, you know, it's not exclusive to this.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, and we just have to make sure we're doing the same thing for the same, for everybody, so it's, you know, like, we give this person that, have it to everybody.
In yearly.
So this year we did two.
Okay.
One, I think it was a three payment, and then there was this one. The three payment was, they wanted to, they gave me the timeframe, and I said, this is what she paid, and they've done it. Uh, these folks, we, in this meeting said, what can you pay, let's get you on track. And they named the number, and I printed the payment sheet in the meeting.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that we're being fair to the individual of this, but also fair to all the other people who are paying their taxes on time. You know, it's kind of sending a, a bad message, like, well, if you don't pay it, like, nothing's really going to happen. Um, then what's going to be, and if people, you know, see what we're doing with this, like, I feel like we should definitely give people like a first chance, maybe a second chance, but we're on this mini, it's. It's kind of hard to keep doing that and expect other people to pay their taxes on time, that's.
So we want to make a motion for it to be paid, uh, right, twelve thirty-one?
Yeah.
Away from twelve thirty-one, twenty-two?
Your recommendations?
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second you.
Get a motion on second, not any further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody.
Okay, uh, public here on proposed general assistance ordinance. Uh, we were not going to be late for this, we received a, bought our general assistance program last week before. Um, and there's a new ordinance that's available to us, so every year we get off the maximum, but this is an actual hold of ordinance. Uh, I sent it in a packet, it's online, it's a hundred pages, if you'd like to study it. I did, but it's been reviewed by municipal and illegal, as well as the HHS, and the recommendation is, uh, that you would answer any public comment question and then adopt it.
Any questions from the public here?
I don't think it is.
Yes and not. Uh, yes, we'll, we'll, we'll close it out here, okay. Okay, moving forward, uh, right, discussion action on dental assistance ordinance, uh, appendices, adoption.
Make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Uh, motion second, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, that's everybody. All right, discussion action on grant letter, uh, support for consolidated communications.
Uh, so consolidated communications is stepping up, they're looking at the main connectivity authority for grant, uh, opportunities to build out fiber. Uh, in parts of Norwood Rock, not all of Norwood Rock, the map that they sent me is difficult to look at. But pretty much you're looking at the maroon on the left center of the page, is what they're talking about, building out. Uh, we have these maps available, have them available to town offices, folks interested in maybe being able to get it scanned on Facebook, but. Uh, you're looking at the Beechhill neighborhood where we already have somebody that's up there building out. Uh, I spoke with Consolidated and they said we're ready to compete, and that is what's good for your consumers. So they're going to run right alongside with Charter, something up there, in addition to other areas, they're going to cover, uh, up towards Madison, two oh one A. Uh, Ward Hill, Fire Road, things like that, so it's nice expanded coverage for under certain areas. They have asked, uh, for a letter of support from you to support their application to the connectivity authority for their, uh, connect the ready grant.
Let's see, no reason we wouldn't support this.
This doesn't interfere with anyone else who's trying to get it in here, so it's just.
Well, it does and it doesn't, they're, they're looking to duplicate the efforts of Charter.
Okay.
At the Beechhill neighborhood, uh, it's competition.
Yeah.
And so I called.
Yeah.
I backed off, I said, wait, 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 are you going to interfere with that? And they said, no, we're direct compete and we're fine.
Okay.
Perfect, yes.
Well, can I move, we accept and send this wrapped up?
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, that's everybody. All right, okay, uh, other business.
Can I just, as a member of the dwindling, as a member of the dwindling vote committee, we have anybody that we could get us some help with, I mean, we're down to two members now.
Jesus.
Now we lost Eric, we were three before, so. I, I don't know, I mean, I, I just, we need to get, I don't.
You must know people, you're in that field, but I don't know many people that want to.
It's, it's November and I got my blinders on.
I bet.
Number, number one, I mean, I, as a board, if you guys can come up with some names, maybe ask them, because. I mean, we were more than five, we were a committee of five, not too many years ago, and now we're down to two. And it's not. We just, we got to keep it going, and we just need some help, so I mean, if you guys maybe come up with some names, number one, number two. You sent me a letter, I, I, when did I get?
No, everybody got that, we just need to get together, throw.
Everybody is two.
Okay, well, let me.
So, but I, so.
Not to be underhanded, personal services, right?
But I mean, I really think that we, you know, I, I don't want that to be overlooked, that, um, you guys can kind of come up with some names to just. Get some, get some blood on there to, because it's important, because we do need the help.
Who's like?
You and Skip. Skip and I.
So if folks are interested in the road advisory committee, they're volunteer agents.
Did you hear that, Facebook? Come on down.
They're also available online under Town of Norwood Rock, um, career volunteer opportunities, uh, if you have anybody who's friends with us. It's pretty easy to get on, and we feed lunch, it's a community that has lunch. Usually.
Why? Why don't we get supper?
Move the location for hosting it.
Well.
I mean, well, right. Anyway, okay, next one, we will keep that in mind.
So, yes, okay.
And there is a newsletter going out, probably over the newsletter.
Yeah, and I mean, I just think that you guys need to be, as a board, is something, you know, just keep your ears open, eyes open as to. What you might think would be a.
Do you mind if I ask?
Skip. Skip and I, we all do that.
And is there a residency requirement for that or not?
I'm serious, I don't think so.
That's.
This is bad.
So Bruce resigned?
Bruce, no, it was never on it.
Really?
Joe Anderson was on.
Joe was on.
Gary Violet.
Gary.
Yeah, but he resigned before that.
Yeah, and Gary just passed and then we had five.
That's kind of bad.
No, but it's. Okay, we back, back when I first got on, it was five, and we had five for a number of years. I can't remember, Doug, Doug left, I don't know if it, anybody take that, that place? I don't either, but we stepped, like I said, it's been dwindling, it lasts two or three years, it's been three.
Well, if you get to one, there won't be any argument in a meeting, will there?
No, 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 have you ever talked to myself, I could really, I got some healthy questions.
Okay, excellent, thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Okay, I need a motion to add discussion action on some Derek with claim the.
Oh, second.
Motion second, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, that's everybody. All right, uh, we'll go approve and sign.
All right, uh, both to approve and sign cemetery quick claim deed, releasing the northern half of block two forty-nine in Sunset Cemetery to Dennis Devaney.
Uh, so moved.
Motion a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody.
And you need to adjourn? I move we adjourn.
Say a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?